How are you doing, Henry?
Hey, hi, Brian.
Evening, Brian. Good evening, Henry. You ready for spring, Henry?
Oh, yeah, God. This cold weather.
Next week, supposed to be in the 50s.
Yeah, every day I get up, sometimes I don't know, geez, am I just cold or do I have COVID or some other thing?
Not sure where everybody is tonight. There's Jay.
Oh, there's Joanne.
Oh, there's Joanne.
Well, so far, it's a motley-looking crew.
Well, hello there, everyone.
Enjoying.
Enjoying.
We're just talking about how everybody's waiting for spring and just agree weather consistently.
I had to stand outside at URI doing the greeting for the COVID sighting testing site. It was cold, my feet were, they're still frozen.
Brian, did you get my email?
I did, but I got it like, you know, when I started logging on, so I didn't have any chance to do anything with it, Jay.
Yeah, don't, I just wanted to make, wanted to make sure you got it, and I think.
Yeah, I did.
They sent it to, to. Who else did I send it to? Henry, Henry, I sent it to Henry and I sent it to Susan.
Here's Larry. All right, I'm gonna, since we've got most everybody here, I'm turning on the record. So, mind your manners. Larry, we have Rex Everly, Terry Murphy, and Cara Biller from Recreation Commission, if you want me to bring them in as well.
Absolutely.
All right.
Brian, did you send minute, send us minutes of the last meeting?
Yeah, everybody should have gotten minutes with the agenda.
Yeah.
If not, you can always link to them through the agenda.
They, they didn't work. I, I tried clicking from the agenda and it didn't take me anywhere.
Okay, I just, I just clicked on the link in the agenda and it brought me right to it.
All right, I'll go back and try again.
I thought I remembered reviewing them, but tonight, right before this, I tried to do it and I couldn't find them, but that's only me and my technical capabilities.
Larry, you're short on your technical. You're much more capable than you think. Okay, I'm gonna go here and click on it again. It says redirecting you to HTTPS colon forward slash twice WWW, nothing there.
Okay. I can shoot it to you again.
Okay. Maybe it's because I'm using the amended agenda and not the first one you sent? Do you think if I went to the first one you sent?
No, because I just called up the amended agenda and it worked perfectly.
Oh, okay. Oh, you know what it's doing? It's downloading them. It's not opening them. It's download, okay. Sorry, it was redirect, it's, it downloaded them, it didn't open them. I'm sorry. Well, I haven't read them.
Well, it's 7:06. We've got a quorum, so let's, let's start going. You're recording, right, Brian? Yeah, I can see that.
I am, we're going.
Well, let's do roll call. Larry Fish here.
Henry there, yeah.
Jay Newsom here. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Mark Levitt, I can't see anything but you here, and just one at a time for some reason, but Mark Levitt here.
Go to the view, you can do gallery.
What's, where is that gonna be?
Up in the upper right-hand corner. There should be something labeled view.
Look for gallery, that'll do it.
Yeah. It's a little square in the corner of the, of the screen.
Yeah, it's too small.
Churchy here.
All right, I'm going to go right to the Saga Tucket River agenda item. If I don't hear any complaints about that, we've got visitors and I value their time. I thank you for coming tonight. And being involved. As, Brian, did you talk to the town manager and?
I did talk to the town manager. Did he call you after we spoke? He said he was going to.
No.
Okay. So, let, what he explained to me, Larry, was that he was basically agreeing with legal counsel Amy Goins. That the way to approach this is to take a vote on a motion to ask the town council to authorize the Economic Development Committee to establish a subcommittee to study the, the park improvements. I did draft up a quick motion text. I can screen share that if you want. But that was my conversation with, with Rob after I spoke with you and we were getting mixed messages. And to Rob's, to Rob's credit, he said, yeah, I might not have quite represented it correctly when I talked to Larry. So, you're not crazy, Larry.
Okay, that, that was about 24 hours ago. So, for the members of the rec committee and our committee, there's procedural things that we need to do, and we've been getting mixed messages on how to do them from different authority figures in town. And, and we want, we don't want to violate any open meetings laws or any, any administrative procedures. So, what, what we, what my committee, what the EDC needs to do is make this motion so that, which will encompass the letter, Susan. And, and the whole, the whole process, what we're trying to do is establish this subcommittee that includes members of volunteers. Like the architect and the, and the engineer, and, and Maria Mack is one of them. And, and the, the rec committee members and administrative staff are members of this committee. And how do the minutes get posted? How, how does the meetings get posted? All the bureaucratic nonsense, but needs to be done. We want to get it straight. And, and therefore, that's what we've been trying to do over the last few days. And we, I, what, what won't happen over my dead body is that we will not delay this thing because of administrative problems or issues. So, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to do. And, and what we're, what we're allowed to do tonight is because we have a posted meeting, we can discuss it. And, and everyone can participate with our visitors and any other volunteers that are there. And, and what we want to achieve today is to write a letter to the town council. Now, it's been changed to authorize this subcommittee to be made up of these people. And, and that subcommittee will come up with the, the master plan, the preliminary master plan. And we're asking for the town council to have a work session with us once we anticipate that being done. So, there's something to review. There's a scope of effort, initial scope of effort with initial dollars and that kind of thing. So that this can happen. And that, and then, once, once they're on board and they can tweak it, they can see it, and in our work session, they can tweak it. And then, we'll have a meeting like we've had in the past at the Contemporary Theater with all the butters, anybody from the town, and we'll have something to present. And, and, and then, take their input, tweak it some more, and then it goes to the town council for adoption or wherever they want to go with it from there. And, you know, this group is not going to monitor the project once it gets approved or whatever. This group will facilitate creating the concept and the master plan and facilitate and identify revenue sources to fund it. And, and that's where I think is, is what we're, our charge is gonna be for this project and where we're going. All right, so that, go ahead, Susan.
Well, I, I'd just like to say, I don't think it's really necessary to do that. I think if we, if we just had an item, an agenda item, which was a discussion of Saga Tucket River on our agenda, and if the recs committee had it on their agenda, maybe not every time, but from time to time, we could just have a meeting like this and the three people from the recs committee could come and.
Right. I, I agree that, that is a way of going.
And if Maria wants to come, she can come, and if she doesn't want to come, she doesn't have to come.
She had a conflict with tonight, so she couldn't be here.
Yeah, but.
And, and I just, I discussed that with Larry this afternoon. Susan, the stumbling block here is the creation of the, the subcommittee. Nothing prevents you from talking about this in your regular capacity as the Economic Development Committee.
Instead of having a subcommittee.
Right, and nothing prevents you from calling special meetings other than your once-a-month meeting to discuss it as the Economic Development Committee. So, any member, any member of the Recreation Commission is free to attend your meeting as a public representative. As are any of the members of the, the planning board. They can attend in their personal capacities as well. They cannot attend as a representative of the planning board unless the planning board elects to send them in that capacity.
Right, so, so that's why I don't see what we get out of the subcommittee. It seems to me, it's just a whole lot simpler. If we just, we just, on the days when there is something to be discussed, we just, we notify Terry at all. You know, she might not.
I, I, I agree with you, Susan. I, I think now that seems the simplest.
Yeah.
The only, the only issue is towards the end of this month, the architect, the engineer, and Maria Mack have scheduled to have a meeting up in a, an in-person meeting up at URI in a big room where they can put out maps and, and landscape plans and, and start creating a likeness, a sketch. And that meeting, I would like your input on, you know, and, and so, what Rex, I, you stop me if I'm wrong, but we can just have an extra meeting that's at URI on such and such a day, and that can be posted. And that's all they're gonna work on.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna have to get clearance through the town. We are still not doing in-person meetings. That's, that's a glitch right now as well. So, I would, I would.
I was told by these people that to do it, to do the design work, they've gotta meet.
Yeah, but, but you know, they're, they.
They're volunteers working on their own time, Susan.
That's right. They're volunteers working on their own, they're like, they're the extension of Will's class. So, I don't see why they can't do their work and then bring it to us, and then it's then that we comment on.
I, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I think as a private citizen, you can go and, and talk with them and, and incorporate stuff if you'd like.
I don't have anything to say to, I mean, what am I gonna say to them? They're doing, they're doing a professional task. They're looking at things that I can't really contribute to. They'll go and they'll, they'll meet, they'll have their maps, they'll do whatever they're doing. They'll draw on their tables, whatever, you know?
Right.
That kind of stuff. And then, when they've done that, which I suspect is better for them if they do that without us looking over their shoulders, they do that, and then they come to us at a, at a meeting, at a recs, and we make sure that Rex and Terry and Cara are there. And anybody.
And, and can.
Anybody else who wants to be there can be there.
Tweak it, ask any kind of questions, try to put holes in it.
Yeah, yeah, but we, we don't, there's subcommittee business. We don't, I mean, we needed the little committee. We were just, we were just trying, I mean, the whole thing is out of proportion, it seems to me. We got, we got into this because we wanted to spare Brian from having to draft the letter that went to town council. So, we said to Brian, Joanne, the other Brian, and I would draft the letter, and we weren't gonna call it a subcommittee or anything. And the three of us, less than a quorum, we were gonna run it up over Zoom, and we were gonna draft the letter, which is what we did several times, and we brought the letter back. And that's where we got in trouble, because that looked like we were going off to do something. And all we were doing, all we were doing was trying to spare Brian from having to write this letter. Now, we've got, now it's just rolling into this ever bigger thing, which I don't think gets us anywhere. I am delighted that Terry and Rex and Cara want to participate in this project, whatever this project is with us. But I just don't see why we can't do, they have a meeting once a week on the third Monday. We have a meeting on the first Thursday. We, if we devote half an hour in each of our meetings to whatever needs to happen, that means we have two meetings a month. What's wrong with that? And then we don't have, it's listed in the agenda, it's public, anybody who can, wants to can come, whatever we have to talk about can be witnessed. It seems.
Brian, you feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with you having representatives at their meeting and them having representatives at your meeting. So long as you don't wind up with a quorum of your people at their meeting and vice versa, that means we would wind up having to double post the, the, the meeting. So, that's something you still need to be cautious of.
Yeah. Hold on a minute, Susan. Jamie, you, you, you feel comfortable? Terry, you feel comfortable?
Yes, Tom.
Yes.
Sorry, Terry. Oh, that's okay. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. I, I think, yeah, there, there's, there's quite a bit of, you know, it's, it's difficult to try to have constructive conversation and wrap our arms around this without, you know, violating certain open meetings regulations. But I, I guess what I would want to point out are a couple of things. I agree that there, this is a, this is a, a kind of a format or a structure where we're able to have more or less high-level conversation, but in terms of the actual development of looking at what might be proposed or, or kind of built upon with this vision for the Saga Tucket is being able to be a part of, of a, the in-depth conversation. I would certainly like to see Rex as, as the expert on our end, being at the table for these meetings with some of the volunteers, so that there's an understanding at the very baseline level of what's being talked about and discussed. And as a matter of process, I think coming back to the rec commission, because ultimately, the Recreation Commission is responsible for at least that piece of this puzzle that is the, that is Saga Tucket Park. I realize that this vision expands outward from the park, but essentially, the focal point is the park. And I think it, it's my responsibility to make sure that the Recreation Commission is the, you know, is the first body that sees the recommendation and then is on board for presenting something, dovetailing with the EDC to present something to the town council to say, you know, we, this has been looked at. We agree this is a master plan that is something that's viable for the, for the long term, and we'll do what we can to, to move it forward, whether it's in small bites as we move it along the line. But that's kind of what I see. I think that the, the monthly meetings and having attendance, us going back and forth is helpful. But I don't think at the level of, of really having substantive discussion about what the details are. And I think at that level, and again, if there's only, you know, one representative or two representatives from, from the Recreation Commission or staff that's involved, I think we can manage that. I would, you know, defer to Rex. I, I would think that as our park superintendent and landscape architecture professional, that, that's something that he would wanna, wanna weigh in on.
Okay. Jamie, you all, you, you joining us in the boat?
Again, the concern and the difficulty is not running amok of the Open Meetings Act. And, and that was the initial discussion of having the subcommittee, and I think it was a little more involved than just getting Mr. Wagner out of writing a letter. And to Terry's point, the concern would be, you know, I'm the director of planning, Terry is the director of leisure. And this is the first we heard of a, this grandiose meeting where people are gonna work on a master plan for the Saga Tucket. And two potential critical players in that discussion just became aware of this meeting that's being held at URI. We want to go to another meeting?
No.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
These are just volunteers that are going to?
This meeting at URI, I mean, I don't, I'm not even quite sure what it is, but, but I gather that what Larry is talking about is just these volunteers wanting to try and sort of figure out the beginning of what it, it's like, it's, they're just, I'm not, I don't know what they're doing, but it seems to me it would be, they're trying to, our charge, Larry's charge to them. charge, Larry's charge to them was, take Will Green's, the, take what the EDC liked about the Will Green class, which was some stormwater management stuff in the river, and this idea of an amphitheater, and, and-
Susan, can I just finish though? My concern was, is as you stated, there's a meeting-
I don't know about the meeting.
The issue of EDC members attending that. And that's where the issue of the Open Meetings Act comes in. If there were a subcommittee and there was a posted agenda, then you don't run amok of the Open Meetings Act, because you could have a four many, four member committees, simply two members of EDC, two members of the Rec Committee, whether they're staff or, or members of those committees, could be the subcommittee. You post an agenda, you start the meeting, you keep very simplistic, basic meeting minutes, and then you conclude the meeting. And that subcommittee can invite guests. And guests could be potential, it, it could be Brian Wagner, it could be another architect, could be potentially another member of the EDC meeting, but you're attending as a guest of that subcommittee. So again, that's why council was being very conservative in guiding us on the subcommittee route. If your choice is to just have it on your regularly scheduled agenda, I, I would put a, potentially, try, you know, you have other business to get through. And more importantly, Terry typically has a very full agenda. So if it was an agenda item at the Rec Commission level, I would, you know, kind of have a placeholder that it's a half-hour discussion, or there's some limitations on that. Again, we would love the fact that we're not going to another meeting on another night in another location. Again, I potentially support the fact, but I think it has to stay focused.
Yeah. This afternoon, Susan, Maria Mack called me and wanted to, we, we always talk before these, these meetings. And, and she just wanted to give me an update that she had talked to the two of, the two volunteers. And she had given me a little update on what's going on in, in DEM and DOT and that kind of stuff. And, and said that they all agreed that they needed to get together in person to, to start envisioning the, the, the plan, and then start doing the nitty-gritty of what's involved, the, is, is the geographic limitations of the site? Will that work in handling the amount of stormwater that's, that comes off the hill down, down High Street? Those kind of things that nobody at, at this table right now have anything to do with. And they were gonna work on that. Now, they're all volunteers, and they can work on their, on their own. And, and I think you're right, they can just come. And we don't really need to be at those things. We can, instead of having a subcommittee, it'll just be a normal agenda item, and we'll give our two cents worth then.
Well-
And, and, and by inviting the, the Rec Committee, I don't even think we need to be on their agenda. They can, they can update their committee on anything that happens in our meeting.
Well, one, one thing I would say, Larry, is maybe Rex, maybe whatever this meeting is that they plan, maybe Rex could go to that meeting. Would that be all right if Rex went to that meeting?
As far as our volunteers are concerned, yes. In terms of open meetings law, I have no idea.
Yeah.
Or Rex's, Rex's staff, it's not an open meetings act issue.
Right. Okay. Well, that, so that, that would work.
That would work.
I'm trying to make this simple. Not have you guys have to go to meetings and, and not violate any, any rules.
So Larry, here's a quick takeaway from the discussion, that legal counsel has advised us of a potential motion to set up a subcommittee. We can have the discussion with the town manager as well as legal counsel, that it is, it appears to be some consensus of EDC to not have a subcommittee and to just add it as an agenda item. But with that being said, I would still potentially move forward on the request to create a subcommittee in case there's a need for it. And you won't lose a month. Okay?
So that's, that's what I'm worried about.
Okay, so something could happen. And it's like, wait, we really need this subcommittee. Oh, we can't do it. We have counsel. We can't get before counsel for four weeks.
All right. Let me get that consensus right now. Two seconds, everybody.
Well, 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 hold on.
Larry, yeah. Joanne has the-
Joanne has the, he ended up, Larry.
Go ahead.
So, um, all good points from everyone. I, I hear every, and, and I think it sounds easy to just say, we'll work in, in these subgroups and keep it separate. And, but the thing is, this is a, a major thing for the town. And I, I, I think it's just gonna delay everything if we keep having these, these type of situations. I really feel like a, a, a simple letter to the town council should be drafted, sent out to say that there's gonna be a collaborative group of different department, government, you know, and volunteers to look at the Saga Tucket, and look how we can make improvements. And, and then have a subcommittee. I know it's like one more committee, but once a month, I think we can handle it, right? I think the volunteers of, working on various things, sometimes the, the craftsmen, the designers like to have a little bit of input on the way. And, and I would, I think I would welcome them inviting us to this committee to go and, and see what they're planning, get some input. It, it just helps drive it and move it. I, I feel like we do need a subcommittee created. A letter should go to the town council and get moving on this, because-
So you don't think we can handle this as a-
Thing of the town.
You, you don't think we can handle this as a committee?
As a sub, as, as a couple different subcommit, a couple different-
No, one, our committee. And everything comes before this committee.
Well-
You think you need, you need to go up and be involved?
I, I, I almost feel that it has to be a new committee with the Rec Commission, planning Maria, you know, with Kara, Rex, and Teresa, Maria, and then Susan, Brian, and myself, and you, Larry, if you'd like.
All right.
Consultants. And so it's a group of about nine or 10 people, and you add it up. And we work the next three or four months to help them get a vision and, and get moving on it. I, I, I mean, I think-
Okay. Jay, what do you think?
So that's, that's my suggestion.
I, I don't have a problem either way, committee or not committee. But one thing that I do think is that if they're, if they're going to have a meeting at URI, and they're gonna be presenting some ideas, I think that we should try to get them to do that virtually. And when that meeting occurs, any, everybody who can attend virtually, if it's during the daytime, probably will be, should be able to attend and not comment, but just see what's going on in their heads. So we'll be prepared for the next meeting to come back and talk about this more intelligently.
I, I hear what you're saying, but I think that would be a violation. Let me go to Tom.
Wait, wait a minute. What's, what's the, what's the violation?
We can't be involved without notifying any member of the committee.
We would not be involved. We would just be watching a presentation.
Hmm. I, I, I hear what you're saying.
It could be like a webinar. It could be, it could be a, a Zoom without any participation on our part.
Okay.
Are there ways to do it?
Tom?
Yeah. So who's running the meeting up in URI? Who's, who's heading the meeting?
Just the volunteers that are supposed to come, come, come back with a preliminary design and make sure that what, what we envision-
Right.
What this committee envisions can be done with the physical site.
And, and volunteers? Are these students or?
No, this is the, the landscape architect-
Professional.
And, 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 uh, engineer from DEM that are all, and other volunteers from DEM that are retired that will help put this together.
Okay.
All professional stuff.
Did they request us to come to the meeting?
No, I don't think so.
No, no.
Why?
No.
Why is there a problem then?
Because, Jay, we're going to give them a charge out of this meeting, all right? With the key elements, and they're going to go back and see if it can be done. All right. Alex?
I want whatever is going to move this project along. I think the subcommittee is gonna make it move along faster, and that's the way we need to go. I also think Terry and Rex are probably more, what's the word, qualified for something like this. Over someone like myself, I'm not really, you know, into building parks and maintaining parks. So personally, I think we do need a subcommittee.
Henry?
Okay, can everybody hear me? Um, what I want is, I just don't want us to violate any open meeting laws.
Yep.
Because that happens, it throws a wrench into our gears. There's gotta be an investigation, there's gotta be this, there's gotta be that. So, um, yeah, I mean, I see, if it was run up through URI, and then we're, you know, the report out of whatever happens there comes to us, that would be optimal.
Okay.
Because it's gotta be a central point of control.
Yeah. Mark?
I, I, I'm just taking it all in. Thank you, Larry. Yeah.
Okay. Susan?
Okay. I, I think there's still some confusion about the relationship between the Randy Collins, Elizabeth Scott kind of people and our committees. I, at Will Green, I think they need, they need some guidance from us, but I believe we've already given them that.
I think, I, I think your email was perfect on what, what we envisioned.
Yeah. So, you know, so we've, we've, and we, but my, my email, for those of you don't know, my email was our letter, Joanne and Brian, was, it took the stuff from our letter, copied it over, and sent it off to them so that they'd know what we were thinking about.
Right.
So I think if they had questions, and, and the other part of my email was the Parks and Rex Plan, so that they could see what, what that plan was as well. So-
Did we see that, Susan? I'm sorry. The, the email or no?
I think I might have just sent it to Larry. I just, I think in, worrying about open meetings, I just sent it to the, but I'm happy to send it to you, Terry.
Yeah. Okay, that would be helpful. I, if I, if I may, um, I think there's still, oh, I, I think there's still some confusion, at least on my part, with the initial discussion with the Rec Commission. You know, this subcommittee made sense in that we were, we were all discussing something at the same time. We were vetting it. We were making sure that at, at every level of this, that there, there was some kind of consensus. If, if it's, if there's a vision already established and that's been sent to volunteers, who I'm, you know, from all, from what I understand, are, are very, you know, expert in their fields. But I still have a strong feeling that there's got to be that baseline discussion again with these folks, with, with staff, with the Rec Commission, before that vision somehow gets fleshed out at their level with no input from, um-
Okay. I can, I, I mean, I'm, I, I'm sorry, I didn't send you our letter that we were-
That's not really the issue.
But, but, but I can see, I can see that whatever this, this drafting brainstorming session that Larry's mentioned, that they're planning to have at URI, that could be, it could be very useful to have Rex, now we know, now that I know Rex is a staff member can, of the town can be there. I think that would be terrific. That would be, Terry, your way of getting whatever you want said. I'll, of course, before that, I'll send you what we sent to them, which was our, which is our draft letter to the, to the town council. Happy to send that around. But then it seems to me that their drafting session could benefit from having Rex's input. Rex is the only one of all of us who has any technical skills that would be useful to them.
And we'll also mention the town engineer, Rich Bourbonet, is also-
Rich Bourbonet, Rich-
Architect. And he teaches at URI.
Yeah. Rich, Rich would be a good one.
Valuable.
Yes.
You know?
Yes. Yes.
Source as well.
Okay. And I didn't mean to leave you out, Terry, when I said there was no expertise.
No, it's not my expertise, I will admit. But, and everything, and that's why it's good to have a committee, a, a new subcommittee, because the Rec knows what the planning, what the EDC wants, what the consultants are all talking about. It just seems like-
Yeah, but, but, but Jo, Joanne, I think there's one thing that, I mean, maybe we do need the subcommittee. I don't like the idea, but, but maybe we do. But we also need to leave these people to be able, you know, they need, they're gonna be doing different kinds of things from what we could do. They're, they're gonna be, you know, they're gonna be talking about the volume of the water and the blood.
Right. But they, they really need to make sure, the Rec Commission makes, needs to make sure that their-
Yes.
Plans are in, like, already, like, really vetted and seen. And they're, because the Rec Commission put a lot of effort into their, their, their-
Well, wait, there's, there's another thing I wanna say, which is the Rec Commission has gone and done something, which, which we have, I mean, we have no, in, in a lot of ways, we as the EDC don't have any say in that. I mean, Terry was generous in saying, well, you know, if there, if there's some ways in which we could get this to work together, that would be good. But I don't, that, that was not, I sent them that as background, but not to say any, you know, I, that, that is sort of in tandem with what the, with what the Economic Development Committee is doing. So it's not that, I don't know, it's-
Well, let's look forward. Like, let's say that they come up with a little bit of a plan, and what do you think about it? It would be nice for a subcommittee to vet it first before it's shared with the Rec Commission, the, the planning commission, the planning-
It's not, it's gonna come back to this committee. Because it's all, it's all work being done offsite to come back to us. And, and in, in turn, the people from the Rec Committee to then say, oh, well, what about this? What about that? I don't think that that should be there. Can it be moved there? And, and everything is gonna work the same way as a subcommittee, only we've got participation from everybody from our committee-
Yeah.
Instead of the, the chosen three.
Yeah.
If the planning director thinks that that's fine, then it's fine with me. I, I think, I would think that you'd wanna start a letter and, and to the top down to let-
That's totally, totally separate, Joanne. And, and we're going to do that letter. That's, that's the next thing we'll talk about.
Okay.
So Larry, just-
My perspective, if I can just say, is that you need more coordination amongst the groups. And it seems to me that the subcommittee might be the best way of doing it. You can do it in the alternate way, but definitely you need more coordination.
Go ahead, Rex.
So, yeah, thanks for having me here tonight, and, and thanks for including us-
Good seeing you again.
In the meeting. Yeah, good to see you, Larry. So, you know, this park is, is kinda near and dear to me, being tasked with maintaining it for total of probably 25 years now. And I, I also worked on it as a studio project when I was in school at URI. And so we've had in our capital plan for about three years now to do some maintenance in the park. One of the items was included redoing the sidewalk around the perimeter of the park. And then when the grant became available last year, Terry did a lot of work to apply for the grant, and we were awarded the grant. And with, as, as part of the grant that we were approved was upgrades to the basketball court and actually making it a dual-purpose court, and redoing the sidewalks and, and the fencing. And so that was all included in the grant. And we were ready to move forward with, you know, not in full design yet, but really to start to get design work and engineering work for those components of it. And then, so, you know, I, I ride by the park just about every day, and I, I kinda have visions of, of how that should move forward and what I envisioned for the fencing and the courts, how that should be laid out and everything. So I, I really wanna be involved as much as possible with a committee, so that when, when we move forward with what we have in mind for the park and what we've been approved for our grant funding, it doesn't conflict with anything, you know, for future plans. It sounds like, you know, the plans for an amphitheater and, and other things is probably a longer-term vision. It's, it's not gonna happen in two years. You know, my, my experience with projects of this size, you know, we- Um, you know, my, my experience with projects of this size, um, you know, we were envisioning our portion of this project to be completed within about a year and a half at the most. So, um, yeah, I, so, and I, to make up, to make it short here, um, I would very much like to be in on a, if there's a subcommittee and be very involved in the design. I know Randy Collins very well, um, so.
You wouldn't even have to be on a subcommittee to work with Randy Collins. I think, um, I continue to think that we leave those, those people we're calling volunteers to do their work. We add to their group two staff people from town, Rex and Rich. They have the guidance we've given them. And that's pretty much all the guidance we can give them.
Right.
And then they, those, however many people they are, they draw, they chat, they do what they can do. And, and then they come back to the EDC, to Terry, and, and we all sit together and we look at what they did. And we can then say, oh, no, we don't like that, or, oh, what a great idea, or, or this is what we, you know. I think, from what I hear from Maria, they're talking about things that would be near term things, small scale things, little things to get people interested in this project that would sort of piggyback on what Rex and Terry are talking about. So they'd be kind of near term improvements that people could say, oh, this is, this is really, this is a great resource. We haven't been paying enough attention to this. And so that, so we could, we could collectively decide, this goes first, this goes second. We need, this is how we get more money for this. This is where we need more formal kind of expertise. We can't rely on the volunteers to do all the drawing that will be required. But I think that the volun, the, this volunteer crew is not gonna get very far ahead of us, um, in a, in a meeting at URI with Rex and Rich there. I don't think they're gonna come back saying we're going to the moon. And then we, we have another meeting in a, in April or something, when we look at what they have come up with.
I just want to, the record say that I, I, I can't offer up Rich. He's not in my department.
Oh, no.
He's an expert. I don't want John Shock coming back and.
Okay, no, no, I'm the one who, I will, I'm the one, I mean, I think Maria's already mentioned that he would be somebody we could call on. And I just, I think that's, we should just ask. I agree. I'm.
See, I see you, Jamie, just a minute.
Yeah, I'm just, I had to say he would be there, but.
Are these volunteers trying to work within a rough budget? I mean, so that, so that we have some expectation that the plans aren't gonna go through the roof?
No, uh, they, they know the constraints that they have.
And when they were in our meeting a couple of months ago, Tom, they, they said that this could cause, you know, this could, if you, if you wanted to talk about the entire watershed, it could be an enormous project. But if you wanted to do what we were talking about through the EDC as a sort of phase one of this thing, they thought it would be manageable. And they further pointed out that there's money slushing around in DEM now to do some stormwater, water quality stuff.
Right.
And Elizabeth Scott has said that if we get in with a bid, with, with, not a bid, with a, with some ideas by the beginning of the summer, which seems like it might be possible, that she and her group can provide guidance for the, for the town to help maturation, the, the drawings and the ideas that would need, if there were, there were larger scale things. So I think we're, I think we're all talking about the same thing. It's just a question of how we get there.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can try and summarize some of the thoughts. Um, you have 14 people on the screen this evening. So if you equate that to everybody has a 27 colored box of crayons, multiply 27 times 14, and we all have an envision of what we're drawing, and we're gonna end up with a multitude of 27 times 14. You're potentially engaging in a conceptual design of multifaceted, multimillion dollar improvement to an area of town. And at some point, you need to control the flow of information. And not necessarily control, but you need to manage the flow of information. I've heard a lot of things tonight from different individuals, which are all little pieces of a puzzle, but no one knows what the puzzle looks like yet. The purpose of the subcommittee and the reason the discussions were to have it two and two, to EDC, to, um, Rec Commission is in essence to be lean and mean and be able to react and move to the changing dynamics of the project. Added to that are your volunteer design team who drifts in and out of the subcommittee. But the flow of information in essence is volunteers to the subcommittee, subcommittee reports back to the full commission, and they keep everybody focused and on track so that you're really dealing with four people with 27 crayons each instead of 14. And the utilization of everyone's time, including staff, you know, we've been talking about this for 50 minutes tonight, is extremely focused. I value everybody's opinion on the screen tonight, but we need to focus those opinions to get an end result. And I think, again, the, the subcommittee's purpose in essence is to articulate the full EDC's kind of vision, as well as the full Rec Committees, meld that, translate it, and work with the volunteer group uh, before they spend six months and then bring a plan back. And everybody says, what, you know, what's, you know, the fear would be, what? Um, how, you know, Tom, you asked a great question. Do they have a budget? You know, are they designing a $2 million park or a $12 million park? And those are questions that the subcommittee, they, they need to be able to bounce ideas off of people. If we have a committee of four and they called us up on Monday and said, hey, any chance we can meet on Thursday? It's probably pretty easy to get four people potentially together in a short period of time, not violate the Open Meetings Act. If we need, you know, if we need to call additional people in, we can try and arrange that. Uh, and then report to the full EDC on a monthly basis, report to the full. Uh, Terry can make the reports, Rex can make the report too. And then when the two committees need to interact with each other, we deal with that then. Um, again, it's.
I don't have a problem with that.
Large committee.
But in your, in your analysis, your example right there, uh, a couple of people say, let's, can you meet next Thurs, uh, this, coming Thursday? I got a couple of hours. I wanna discuss this about it.
Yeah.
Well, you have a subcommittee like that, you can't, because you have to buy, you have to post it.
24 hours, 24 hours, special meeting, subcommittee. We can pull that off.
You can pull off with no notice?
24 hour notice, special meeting of a subcommittee.
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight for a special meeting, Brian, or regular?
That, that's what I'm trying to avoid, is that kinda stuff.
But again, we can, we, we can move quick, quickly, Larry, um, and, and be able to react, be able to pull Rex in when needed. If we need to, and Rich is available, pull them in. Um, a lot of the members aren't aware of my background. I have 32 years in the planning field. I've been involved in six major park overhauls and redon, redesigns. I've been involved in about eight full park designs. I've reviewed and been involved in the design of close to 10, 18 hole championship golf courses. I'm an award-winning design review entity by the Department of Environmental Protection as it relates to multi-purpose trails. So I have something to bring to the table. Rex, you know, is probably far beyond that, and he can bring a lot on the table. But it's just when we need to be at the table needs to be critical. We don't always need to be at the table. You know, uh, Randy's extremely qualified, Will Green's extremely qualified, Maria's qualified. Sometimes that design charrette, they may just wanna meet Thursday to get together as three people and try and figure out where they need to go. And then they wanna talk to Rex and myself and Rich. You know, but we don't know that, because we weren't even aware of what they were trying to accomplish. So again, it's not the control of information, it's just the flow of information to try and manage that in an orderly manner so that we can get across the, the goal line. You know, we don't wanna be stuck at the 20 yard line figuring out how to cross it.
So I wanna ask you this then. Do you think, in your, your opinion, would be that we should ask the, the town council in a letter to form a, a, a formal subcommittee or a separate committee?
Hey, what, what the, Brian's motion is, and we worked with this, Amy and the town manager today, is essence to ask permission of the town council to authorize the Economic Development Committee to create a subcommittee. So town council's not creating it. They're authorizing you to create this subcommittee. So they're, 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 they're blessing that action.
Right. I, I have no problem with that. If that's, if that's what staff wants to do, and it's the quickest and, and safest way of doing it, then I'd entertain a motion right now to do that. Can somebody?
One, one last thing. The, the next thing we did to, Brian and I even talked about logistics of this subcommittee meeting. And potentially, you meet at Thursday, on Thursdays at seven o'clock. My suggestion would be if, if they were available, we would meet at six o'clock with the subcommittee.
That's what I was thinking.
Agenda item that we can report right out to you following this, following that meeting.
That's great. Any member wanna make that motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
All right, Tom. Do I hear a second so we can put it on the, on the floor?
I'll second.
All right, Alex seconds it. Uh, any, I think we've killed it.
Yeah, and the, just.
Talk about it.
It'll take, it takes 40, for, for this, these four people to meet, we have to post it 48, 48 hours before we meet?
Yeah, 40, 48 business hours, so you can't count weekends.
Oh, and, but the, but the volunteer group doesn't have to do this. They can meet whenever they want. It's just.
Rex, Susan?
If we wanna meet with them, is that what we're talking about?
If we wanna meet with them, we post it.
Okay, well, if we, if they can meet, if they can meet without us from time to time, then I guess I'm all right with this. As long as they don't have to be bound by this kind of stuff, they'll, we'll never get anything out of them.
If they're not members of the committee, it doesn't trigger Open Meetings Act unless they're members of a different body. Um, but it wouldn't trigger Open Meetings Act for Maria and Randy to meet, or Maria and Randy to meet with Rex and, you know, or other staff members, because.
Okay.
You don't have the public body question.
Okay.
And that would be my preference, by the way, if, if Randy and Maria and, um, um, Elizabeth Scott, is that her name?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Our, our meeting, I think it's just helpful as if they're discussing things that, um,
I agree.
Person, because then, then we can rule things out if we know off the bat.
I think that, that's, I agree.
As long as we're in the loop on that, that's, that's great.
Uh, and I just, as a point of order, uh, Paul Jordan, who's also a member of, uh, the planning board, is, is one of the engineers that's working on it too.
I heard from Paul today, as a matter of fact. He had some questions about Sawtooth Park, so.
All right, so Paul and Maria are from planning, the planning board. So, Jamie, I just wanna make sure, you know, we don't violate anything.
We will, we will double check that with council. Again, they're, they're acting on this volunteer design team as members of the public. They're not, not appointed by the planning board. But again, Open Meetings Act, we're aware of it now that we may have two planning board members attending a meeting. Um, we'll just make sure, maybe they can't be there together. They have to be there individually at different times.
All right.
I had, I had just had a, so Brian Smith was on our little EDC group.
Yep.
And I know it was two and two. So what should we do about that? Do you want me to opt out to have Brian stay in, or?
That's up to the three. Or, okay, we, we can't make it three and three because the Rec Committee, that would, that would force a quorum in there.
So three and two, can we do three and two?
Can we do three and two?
No, that, that, this is, this is what, um, that the town manager advised me to, to put forth. So two and two is what we're gonna go with.
Okay, well, so the only thing I would say to you, Joanne, um, is that there is this other thing that is being discussed, which is the anniversary of the town. And maybe it would be useful if you sat there and then when I had questions, I could call you and ask you about what was going on over there. And so, so maybe there's a way we can still share some information.
Actually, this doesn't really affect anybody but the three of you, so.
Okay, so we'll take it up. We could draw straws, although, yeah, okay.
All right, so we, we wanna do this?
Again.
We had a discussion.
I guess we've spent a lot of time on it. We should do it.
Well, this is the main item, and that's why everybody's here. So.
Yeah, that's right. Rex and Terry and Kara can leave after this.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any, any opposed?
Aye.
Henry, you're, you're, you're an aye, you're not a nay, right?
I'm an aye.
Okay, so that's unanimous, Brian.
Okay.
And, and, uh,
And do we have two designees?
I was gonna have, um, the three interested individuals discuss that amongst themselves.
Yeah.
On, the two would be out of the three, Susan, Brian.
Okay.
With Joanne.
Yeah, so, two out of those three.
Okay.
And everybody on the, on the, uh, EDC approve of that?
Yes.
So then I just have a question, is, um, on the, from the Rec Commission, is it, is it Kara and Rex?
No, Rex isn't a member of the committee. He's a staff.
Kara is a Rec Commissioner, yes.
Right.
Right, so it's.
You'd have to come up with one more.
We may, um, we may request that it be a staff person, um, and a commissioner.
All right, and, and that's okay?
Unless there's some issue with that.
That, that, it's not, there's no legal issue with that. If, if Terry wants to have Rex step in instead of another commission member, that's fine.
We'll put it to the commission, and if there's another commissioner that would prefer to be on the subcommittee, then, then Rex will, you know, s- serve as staff, um, and we'll, we'll have another commissioner.
I'll, I'll volunteer, David.
There, Terry.
Doesn't he do that to people who don't show up? Okay.
Some sort of distress. More than happy to help out.
Thank you, Kara.
Good, thank you, Kara.
Very exciting. It's a very exciting project.
Thank you, Terry and Rex and Kara for being here. Sorry this was so painful.
Yeah.
Not painful at all. Very exciting.
Thank you. Happy to be here. Thanks for your interest in the park. It's wonderful to have, uh,
Oh.
Lots of interest in Sawtooth.
Thanks for what you've done so far. It's great.
I've had a lot of people come up to me and, and wanna help out from the, from the public.
That's great.
Some of which will, can bring significant resources.
Wonderful. We'll, we like that.
Everybody wants to be outdoors now. Everybody likes to be outdoors. So, any way that we can, uh, improve that, be more than happy, honestly.
Rex and, and, and some of those people are people who grew up right at that basketball court and have fond memories, just like you do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you've got good company.
Good. Well, it was, it was nice to see everybody. Nice to put some faces to the names I've heard a lot about. So, um, I look forward to, to working on this project with everybody.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Okay. Thank you very much. Everybody have a good night. Bye-bye.
You.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, let, let's, uh, let's talk about the letter now, because that has to be finalized. I, I would, uh, like to have a motion that encompasses the, the, uh, the subcommittee that we, what we're asking for. So the letter, and Brian, you can, you can draw this up. It doesn't have to be Susan that draws this up, but it's those three points that were in your letter, Susan.
And Brian has, Brian has a draft.
Oh, I, yeah, and, and I think that, uh, uh, it should, it should go and, and ask for this, it's gotta incorporate the, the committee that we've designed right now with, with their motion. And, um, I think that that's what it is. And, and.
Should, I have a question. Should it mention, um, should it mention the grant from Parks and Recs? Maybe not. Maybe that's none of our business. Maybe it just says we're setting up this committee with them.
Yeah.
To incorporate. To incorporate what we'd like to see with, and coordinate it.
Yeah. All right, Brian, I can send you a copy again of what Joanne,
Please.
Joanne, Brian, and I worked out so that I send you the most, and maybe we'll look at it as we send it to you, but.
And I, I think the letter can ask for a tentative date of a work session with the town council and the EDC in mid-May.
I think you are way too premature to be asking for meetings with the, the council. I think you need to let the subcommittee play out, and, and I think you need to make sure that you have your, your arms around the problem before, and, and I had worked up something else just to share it real quick. You know, these are the things I think you need to answer before you're ready to go back to council. I think you need to have a, a concept plan generated, maybe two or more alternatives that might address different cost or feasibility issues. You need to understand what your project feasibility issues are in terms of, of cost, regulatory issues, project timeline, and whether or not we need other people to partner with us. I know that some of the stormwater issues could potentially be located on the other side of the river or offsite. I think that since this is an idea that's coming from an economic development committee, I think you're going to have to be able to tell the town council, you know, what the business case is for this and, and how it is actually going to result in economic improvement. And then I think we need to have a much firmer idea of outside funding sources. I know people have talked a lot about there being money available. After our last meeting, I did some poking around, and I was not able to find any open app, grant application things out there that were entertaining projects like this. So maybe I wasn't looking in the right place. Sometimes these things aren't advertised particularly well. But I couldn't find one. I contacted some people that I know up at DEM and sort of described what we're doing, and I was told, no, they weren't aware of anything out there that would support this, so. Yeah, we need to know where some of the money's coming from.
One source of funding that's been talked about is DOT.
Yeah, DOT is also another, so.
And I looked at DOT's open, open grant applications, and I didn't see anything that would support this.
This is, this is consent decrees with DOT and DEM.
Yeah.
It has nothing to do with grants.
Yeah, it's not grants.
And, and that's why you're not finding it. When I talked to Maria today, she said that Randy and Paul had talked to Elizabeth Scott and I think Sue Cannon was, was talked to as well, and they're starting down the path of whether the project would qualify and whether it would be in the, in the priority timeline and, and that kind of stuff. So I, I know that it's being worked on. Number four is being worked on through the back channels, if you will, of the people involved. And they have to come up with number one so that they can identify the scope of what's necessary to pre-treat the water, the stormwater runoff, to see if it's the feasibility that can do, you know, whether we can handle it on that site or where it could be handled, or whether it needs to be broke up into multiple sites. They're, they're going to work that down in their little work session. And, and at the same time, concurrently, they're, they're going through the process in DOT and DEM preliminary, I'm not, and nothing formal or anything else on, yeah, this is great, we could fund that. Well, what's the size? Well, they're working on that, so now they can tell them the size, so then we know whether it's three hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars or two million. Nobody at this table knows that yet.
Right.
Feasibility, whether it can be done. It looked good. All right, amphitheater and all, or stormwater is cleaned up before it goes in the river underground, you know, and underneath the basketball court and everything else. Great design in our heads, but these guys are going to make it happen, and they're going to do all the numbers to make it happen. I absolutely agree with Jamie. So the, the four is, I know one, four is underway, which would encompass two. This committee has to deal with three, and I would say that's the main item on the agenda for the April first meeting of this committee, is to work on three.
And I, I think we might also have some stuff to do on, on sort of the vision stuff that might be behind number one. But Brian, can you send us, can you send us this, your little list here?
Yeah, not a problem.
And I think it might be better if it weren't called Park Project, but River Project.
Sawtooth.
And.
Sawtooth, as Joanne says.
I would hope, I would hope that we give this list to the, to the volunteers as well.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're professionals. They know all this has to be done, but it's good that they know that we, we know that it needs to be done.
Okay.
All right, so, so my whole point is that these volunteers thought they'd be able to do the preliminary plan by April first, and I, I think that that's an apropos day, because I think that would be an April fool's joke on all of us. But I do, in talking with Maria, she did think that they could have a first go-round conceptually by our May meeting, our first of, first of May, you know, whatever Thursday that is, the first week of May. And my point is, at that stage, when it's still an embryo, is a good time to show the town council the embryonic vision of it, and let them tweak it if they want, or to, to say, go for it, we love it. And, and, and then finalize our initial design of the project after that, and then have the, the contemporary theater kind of presentation to the butters and to the public, so they can have, they can look at it and, and, and tweak it, get their information, come back and redesign it, then go back to the town council with a finalized idea.
Larry.
Might just be a little bit longer, Larry. Instead of May, it might be more like June, I'm thinking.
I, I think that we could do it in, in May, and I think we should do it maybe mid to late May, because we also need to get to them at the same time, probably. We're going to have one meeting, you know, probably one, one opportunity to talk about that and the, the celebration for the three hundredth. So those, those should be covered in a May meeting, I think, and we, we should have enough information to be able to, to get them interested in what, what has transpired to date, and to get a go-ahead. If we can't get that by May, then I think we got a problem.
We're going to need a schedule.
Mid to late May.
At that point, right?
Yeah, I think, I think, I, I think we're asking them for a potential date in mid-May for a work session. And, and it's, if, if, if we have to delay it, it's, it's okay, you know, the first week of May, and, and we're not there, we can tell them we'd like to delay it a month or whatever. But I think by having a targeted date, we have something to strive for, and it doesn't get kicked down the, down the can.
I agree.
But, but with this letter, Susan, if we ask for that date then, while they're creating the subcommittee, I think it, it kind of puts it in a timeline.
Okay, well, well, I think it's pretty ambitious, but I'll leave the setting of the date up to Brian and Jamie.
Yeah.
I'll let them, I'll let them weigh in on what they think we ought to be putting in for a date.
And, and Brian, you can ask, you can talk to Maria or Randy Collins or those guys and see what they think. If they think they'd rather have June or July, I don't, I don't really care. I just think that we need this, when, when we're writing this letter to the town council, we should give them some kind of timeframe that we want, we want to see them.
Maybe we just keep it open and say, you know, sometime by, by this summer, you know, or something.
I, I would prefer to keep it general like that if we're going to ask for anything, because I, I really think right now we're dealing with a concept.
Yeah.
And I think before you ask to sit down with anybody, you need to at least have preliminary sketches on paper with some idea of what we're looking at in terms of cost.
I, I absolutely agree with you.
Yeah, and I don't think that, that can't be done in this amount of time, so.
And, and wait, is part of that also going to be bringing the community in for feedback? Is that after? All right, so that's after.
That's after. You know, the town council is basically endorsing our preliminary idea so that we can, and they, and basically what they're saying is, yeah, okay, it's at a point where you can show it to the public and get the butters' input as well.
Got it.
All right.
So Larry.
Go down that road and not have the town council right there. I want them at the meeting.
If, if I were to format a letter that asked for the creation of the, the subcommittee, and then simply express that it is the, the hope of the Economic Development Committee that we have thumbnail sketch of concept ready for discussion sometime during the summer. I think that's about as solid as you, you could hope to go at this point.
Yes, yeah, I agree.
I think that's.
Are you going to join us in this boat? You, you think that that's okay and doable?
Who did you ask?
Jamie.
Oh.
Again, I would.
You've got the experience in this.
Yeah, it's, again, not knowing what the initial team's coming up with and what the scale and scope of everything is, is, you know, what their focus is. I think, you know, speaking in broad terms is your best, you know, under, over, under promise, over deliver.
Correct.
I, I, yeah, I was thinking in my head, could you even say late spring, early summer, and that may be pushing it versus saying midsummer, early fall, and if you come in summer, you know, you look like a hero. The council can be in the mix of, of budget discussions through May and early June. So, you know, their slate's going to probably not clear, you know, July anyhow, with their workload. So, you know, we, we got a comprehensive community plan. We have to hold a public hearing for in the next month or so, and again, they're in the midst of a budget season, so. I think Brian and I may have a better idea if we get a chance to talk to Randy on what his availability is, time he's going to be able to dedicate this, to this, as well as Will Green and, and the, the volunteer team. I think that's going to dictate a lot of things. Randy may have a month now, but all of a sudden he's pulled to somewhere in Boston.
Exactly.
And gig. Those timetables may change.
Right.
Well, I, I'm going to say this again about the, the celebration. Time is passing. It's 2023, and right now, we're into 2021, and by summer or fall, we're going to have maybe fourteen, sixteen months to get ready for it. Why don't we think about doing a subcommittee to get working on that so that we can have, have the town council, you know, on board with the idea that something's happening? You know, we can just kick the ball down the road as long as you want to, but it's just going to put us in a bind for that particular evolution.
I think that's a pregnant idea.
I think the town manager was very strongly behind that idea of, of sending a letter to the town council, letting them know that, that this is coming up and suggesting or asking that they think about putting together a, an ad hoc committee to, to deal with it while, while we're still, you know, a year and a half out.
I think we should take that as a priority. I mean, I know we're not discussing that now, but I'm, I'm on board with, with waiting on, on a meeting with the, the council until we get some more particulars on the Sawtooth.
The letter then.
Wait on the, on the celebration.
Brian, why, why don't we ask for two sub, permission for two subcommittees?
Yeah.
All right, and, and, and the elephant in the room. Joanne, how about you being the chair of that subcommittee? And, and then Brian and, and Susan will go there, and Henry, you and Joanne can go with the other one.
Yeah, sounds like an idea.
We've got the text for subcommittee. You can just change the names and then.
I have a lot of information, Larry.
Yeah, I, I think this is something that might be better off as a, as a full ad hoc committee, you know, for a one-event thing. It is a big event. I, I don't know that this committee should really take that all on its shoulders all by itself, and I think the town council is going to want to try and attract other people to try and, to work on that. I, I think you will get volunteers to work on that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Henry, go ahead.
Well, if we can move the agenda to the tricentennial, you know, I've done quite a bit of research, and I have to, you know, give a shout out to Jessica Wilson at the, is the research librarian, who spent at least two weeks in microfilm of what happened at the 250th. Joanne found the only original brochure that exists, and I could tell you, I'll just try to give you a 10,000-foot view, because if I get into the weeds, we're going to be here tomorrow morning. The council appointed a committee of thirty-five people. That's right, and those thirty-five people were representative of the Chamber of Commerce, the Wakefield Village Association, the Lions Club, the Rotary Club, the Women's Professional Club, the Women's Junior Professional Club, the Elks Club, this is just about every civic organization had representation on, on the committee for the 250th. The, the people that were, most of these people are gone. I would say ninety percent of them are gone by now. But the general frame of mind of the people that I might happen to know was they were going to spare no expense to do this, no expense. And they put together events that were May, June, July, and August that included things like a massive parade that had twelve divisions in it. They, they had fireworks celebrations, they had concerts, they had plays that, this is where, most of us remember the Heritage Festival. They used to be in Marina Park. This is where that spawned on of, and Larry, to you, they took over the Wakefield Mall parking lot to, to build the parade. Okay, but bottom line on what happened, I mean, the detail is just enormous. The bottom line is they attracted over fifty thousand people into town. And the boom to local businesses went on for like two or three years afterwards. And the boom to local businesses went on for like two or three years afterwards. I mean, because these people, they came into town, they learned about South Carolina as a destination. They came back here, they spent money in restaurants, they spent money in businesses, they spent money, Walrus was there at the time. And it was an incredible success. But it's almost the point when I was reading it, even though I was there, I'm saying to myself, I don't really remember it being this big. And I said to myself, this is a little delusional, but they managed to pull it off. But some of the the people that were involved were very, very influential people. They had at the time Senator Pastore was involved. They had Senator Pell was involved. Cianti kept showing up here and there. But all of the towns, town fathers, if you will, were all vested in doing this. So. What? No, this was four months.
Okay.
Four days.
So if do you want me to give a little background on what we did? For the 125th, we we, if this helps, we had a a planning group, there are about 12 of us that met weekly. And we were the movers and the shakers to to put together a a plan that we then presented to what we called a steering committee. And that represented, like you were saying, Henry, you know, to be very inclusive. So we got the colleges, someone from each college. We got alumni, we got every student organization, we got, you know, this, that. So we had a group of about 50 people on the steering committee. It was something like 42 or something. And so every area was represented, so from each campus and and everything, faculty, staff, students. And basically what we did is we presented them with what the planning committee drafted. So you don't have 50 people coming up with like Jamie was saying earlier with all these crayons and everybody trying to, you know, to kind of.
A lot of crayons.
The ideas.
Yeah.
Now, I I drafted a pretty much a year long celebration for SK. I think we're at that point where we can do year long because many of the things could be virtual, including various lectures and things like that that everybody's doing now. So it could be a year long celebration that we, you know, we do get a committee together and then and then there's a you know, group of nine, 10, 11, 12 of just some key, you know, departments that we think could work. And then we have an honorary steering committee, which represents everyone in the town in a sense the the school committee to the librarians, to the, you know, students, to the, you know, from high school, you know, and all that. And then everybody they weigh in is you've got good representation. And then the others, the small committee runs with everything. So that would be my suggestion because it's very hard to work with huge amounts. And then we reported back to them one more time. You know, the first the president was there, the very first meeting congratulated and thanked everyone for being on it. Then we did all the work, went back to them one more time and just said, these are the final plans after your input, you know, because we tweaked some things, you know, one thing we're not we're missing is something more on more in diversity or, you know, something like that. So then we tweaked it and then we brought back the calendar year of all these things. We had pillars, four pillars that we're focusing on from the culture of URI to this, this and this. So you you might want to come up with themes and then a year of year long calendar event. So if that helps, we could mimic like that.
But the.
Why don't we write a letter? Why don't we have a second letter that Brian could write that's going to appeal to Rob? And suggest that the EDC has been interested in this issue, has identified the date and has two people on the committee who would be very interested to consult with the town council to see how to organize the town to get ready for this. Then we're not offering to do it, but we offer to meet with them. We bring this expertise that we've got the historian and in Henry, the the expert in Joanne, and we say that these two people are ready because the town council is not going to have Joanne's expertise in doing this. And it seems to me if we identified this as a contribution to the town council as it thinks about this, I think that would be very helpful. If I sat on the town council, I would say, oh, yes.
Yeah. But the thing is to understand the magnanimity of it. I mean, there were 12 divisions in the parade.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. I don't think we need to. I.
No, I just want I just want you to get an understanding.
Oh, it's gonna be huge.
Of how delusional, well, big that they got. They had 12 divisions in a parade, National Guard units, Navy units, police from just about every police force in the state, state police, bands.
We might want. Entry. We might want something that moves, you know, looks forward.
Yeah, and and most interestingly, they there was even a Native American festival over in South Kentucky Park that that people could go to. And there was one thing in there. I looked at it and I said, oh, I remember this. I don't think you could do that today, but they had
Oh, you told us.
The Mid-South County Queen. I said, oh, no.
Was that your wife?
No, there were there were three or four of them were classmates of mine. And what they did is there were like 14 girls that had a float and they were dressed in colonial costumes. And then what were they? They people voted on to be the Miss South County. I got a pretty nice scholarship to college in that fall. So so that went on, but there was a lot of women's organizations, like I said, is I don't even think, Larry, do you know is does that women's club still exist anymore?
No, it's 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 defunct now. I was on it, South County Women in Business and Women's Organization.
It's gone?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's too bad. And it had a ball that you want, right?
What is cool, though, is the Tomahawk Museum in. It's gonna be opening up and I believe it's for 2023, so it could be simultaneous, you know, to celebrate all that as part of it and all that.
Did you fit that right in?
Things that we could sync to, yeah.
Okay, Susan, I think we need letter number two.
Yeah, I mean, I think, why not? We can just write this letter. Rob wants us to do this. But it was also clear that the town council probably wants it to be more, and we too don't want it to be just an EDC event, so.
No, no.
We just offer our expertise in these two particular people and we say we're willing to come. You're willing to go and talk to them about how to formulate whatever it is that's appropriate for the town to do.
Yeah, that we can come up with a some draft plans to share with the committee, just say something like that in the letter.
Yeah, see, one thing I want to do, Joanne, is I want to take all of the notes that I have, and it's quite a bit, and try to boil it down into about a dozen slides. Because otherwise, you you're you're gonna be so far into the weeds.
Yeah, and like Susan said, you know, they might have done 50 years ago, you're not might not necessarily want to do that now. You might want something more for the time. So, yeah, there's there's a lot of things, yep.
Yep.
Larry, I think listening to the discussion, we can, Brian and I can work with the town manager and formulate a letter for your signature articulating the the EDC commission to participate in the 300th year and the best way to make positive steps towards that. And you have two people who are very interested on either taking the lead some type of subcommittee or actively participating on that subcommittee to be formulated and, you know, named by the town council or or others. And I think we can put that language and and put your wishes in in that letter.
Okay, call us the committee. We're not a commission. I think we're the Economic Development Committee.
Correct.
Henry, if if some of the information that you've run across, if that's something that you can send to me in terms of the the last committee that was created, it might provide some interesting material to to put in the letter.
Yeah, I'll see what I can do.
Okay.
But it's but the thing is, there's just so much of that that I'd have to zip it all into one big file. And I think.
No, you have to boil it down, Henry.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't. Brian, do you want me to put together a little bit of a process thing to send you to include or?
That's probably something that would be valuable if we act if and when we actually get to the point of getting on a council agenda to discuss the creation of this committee with them. You could lay that out at that point in time. What I was really interested in is is whatever Henry had gathered about the last committee that was created and the scope of the events that the last celebration involved.
Do that.
So I don't need a huge amount of detail, just a a nice picture, Henry.
Yes, okay.
I I think I think Joanne some kind of a bio on what you did, what you were involved with up at URI for their 125.
This is what Joanne does for a living.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, send me that too, then. We'll see what we can work in there.
That's key, that they know, like, a little bit about the background of the two people that that are are offering the.
I I think, in fact, even though you don't use it now, I think maybe if Joanne had you know, some little scope of what they did at URI for 125. I think, Brian, that could be useful, even if you don't use it right now.
Okay.
Um, I think that could be good.
Okay.
All right.
So.
Do we still have one motion on the floor? Can we combine the two motions?
No, let's do two separate ones and then I'll fill separate items on the agenda. Uh, the first, the the one that's been voted on and is on the table is that we form a subcommittee. Uh, we ask permission for the town council to create a subcommittee of the EDC along with the Rec Committee with our two our two people and their two people.
Okay, so that that's done. You you there was a motion, there was a second.
That was done.
Have we voted on that?
We voted. We voted.
But now we can do the one for the a separate letter as discussed with Henry and and Joanne and their input to Brian. And I'll sign I'll sign that letter at the same time.
I so moved.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Both. God, we're unanimous in all our stuff today.
All right, COVID. Is COVID next?
No, the the business data, but there's really nothing to report on that, right?
I think Jay just sent it around about 10 minutes before the meeting or I saw it.
He sent some new materials around about 10 minutes at like 10 of 6.
Let me let me explain. I I'm at a stopping point until uh, somebody else takes a look at the situation. I was able to manipulate the date data to a point, but I could not get the 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 dates all in a two-digit month, two-digit day, four-digit year. It just it just wouldn't work. I couldn't do it. So what I've done is I've I've sent the updated for 2014 list to you and the updated 2021, all in the same format. But the dates on the two are still not in agreement, and I think it's going to cause a problem. So perhaps somebody else can do that. I'm at an impasse. Uh, I will, however, if there's no other way to do it, if it's felt that it's needed to be done, I will go back and look at those 1,342 or whatever it is data entries and adjust the dates manually. But I'm not going to do that till somebody says there is no way to do it on in Excel. Uh, that it's going to be a lot more a thousand, a million times.
Henry, can you look into that?
I I can circulate those materials this evening when we're done.
Yes, I can.
Okay, so let's let's do that. And we'll keep the, Brian, put a note to keep this on the agenda for next month. All right, the next thing is a COVID update, which Rob's not really not here tonight, and he's the one that usually does that. So I'd like to go on to the next item on the.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I have some comments about. Um, it seems to me, well, first of all, I was hoping Rob was going to be here and so I could learn that the town is actively pursuing with CVS to use our CVS in town to distribute vaccines, but he's not here, so I can't ask that. But it did seem to me that the EDC could be thinking ahead, not this is not an update from Rob, but we could be thinking about the ways in which some activities in the summer could be based on being outdoors, you know, we could we could come up with some sort of a campaign that would have outdoor dining, outdoor entertainment. Because even though it looks like we're in good shape in terms of the numbers of vaccines, I don't think we're going to have a lot of people who will be totally vaccinated. And we want to try and have some sort of summer activities here. So I thought we should just be thinking about things like what Warren is doing to have tents outside and activities outside and suggest that to businesses that they consider doing some of those things.
Bristol is in their parade.
Yeah.
I I I I think that the new governor
Yeah.
is really working to open up the state more as opposed to the old governor. A day old, and I'm calling it the old governor. But anyway, the today they announced indoor dining.
Sixty.
Two thirds.
Yeah.
I I I think that by Memorial Day, it will be really close to open open.
Well, okay, so that's a that's would be lovely. But I mean, I think, for instance, before people like me, even though I'm going to be vaccinated by then, before people like me are going to go sit indoors in a restaurant, I'm going to wait until everybody else sitting in the restaurant is also vaccinated. And I don't think that's going to happen until sometime in the fall. So I just thought if if we could think about the ways in which, I mean, last year, there was all this discussion about how we could set up extra picnic tables and we could, I mean, maybe we could invite food trucks or picnic tables or tents or something so that there would be for people who are still timid about being indoors and enclosed. There could be ways in which there would be things. I mean, I went by Brickley's and Brickley's has taken off its front door.
Yep.
And it's put there, you know, a sort of.
Takeout only, yeah.
What we what we used to have on the Jersey Shore where you went to get your Daisy Freeze or Dairy Freeze or whatever it was called. And you're not going to be able to go in. And so if we could, if we could just kind of get people thinking about ways in which they could conduct their business, maybe maybe we ought to block off some parking spaces on Main Street so that every restaurant has two parking spaces in front of it blocked off by Jersey walls or something so that people can actually could sit outside if that if that made them more comfortable. Because whatever the governor says, there still is going to be the fact that a lot of people are not going to go rushing back
Yeah.
to go in.
Susan, I think you're right about that. Yeah, some having Main Street blocked off Friday, Saturday nights or something like that would just make it like it'd be a festival every weekend and you're just going to have more people walking around and.
And then you just have people outdoors. No, I was thinking about blocking because I know what it means to block off the street. Oh, my God, that's a that's a nightmare. But if we could, if we could just carve out some some things in front of each of the places that's an eatery so that there could be spaces where people could sit outside, you could have folding chairs and quickly folding tables and stuff. I don't know. It just seems to me like it would be a good idea. People who are coming here are coming from New York. They could be bringing variants of this disease. There could be a lot of concern on the part of residents and visitors that they need, they want to be outdoors. And so I think we should think about the ways in which people could conduct as much business as possible outdoors this summer.
Will there be grants, Brian, when you did that that winter? The the heater, you think there'll be something for, you know, funding for tables and chairs and?
I I don't know whether there's they're gonna try and do another round of that. I I know a lot of the money that went out, went out so late that I expect to see it being used during the spring because you know, a lot of places were gonna throw up tents in the middle of December and January. There's a limit to what you can do with them. You know, a lot of places were going to throw up tents in the middle of December and January. There's a limit to what you can do with them in that kind of weather. Um, but I do expect to see them go up. To make the spring come a little early, so, um. But I, I'm not hearing anything about. A redo of the take it outside grants that we did in the fall.
Yeah.
Um, Larry, I know there have been some discussions with the building department as well as the town manager's office that we've been involved in about a few businesses, primarily restaurants. Not expanding or initiating more outdoor space. We do have two tents that the town purchased in the take it outside that, uh, we are. Coordinating with the town manager's office on how to make those available. To businesses in the community and just, uh, I want to say this week, Brian, we were talking about the formats for that, whether it's. You can have them for a weekend, you can have them for a week. Uh, you know, we're working on lease clauses so that if one borrows a tent for a month. That it comes back and the same kind of. Enter that we delivered it to, and just said the logistics of, we have the tent, who picks them up? Do they get delivered to the site? Who puts them up? Prior to taking them back, do we go and make sure the tent isn't, you know, doesn't have. And the side panels are missing and the heater is broken. So some logistics involved in that, but we, you know, we anticipate. Through the town manager's office, um, you know, rolling out some type of news flash of, of an almost request, you know. Here's what we have available, who would like to entertain, uh, competing for this and allowing that in South Kingstown. Uh, also, I know a couple of restaurateurs have approached the building department about potentially making some of their outdoor space more permanent.
Yeah.
I think that was.
How about food? I'm sorry, Larry, I was talking when you were talking and I didn't hear what you said.
I said, I, I think all the outdoor dining was an emergency authorization by the town manager. After them submitting it and everything else, and I think, wasn't there an expiration date and they, they all need to reapply?
In Mar- I believe the dates are March unless they're extended, so that'll be on a, a. Council agenda shortly. Um, also there's some discussion of some legislation at the state level to either automatically extend. Or potentially automatically approve what existed.
Well, that would be good. That would be very good.
Well, there's, there's a lot of. Ifs, our, our questions about that. A lot of things were allowed to be done that are outside the parameters of what the zoning code allows. And, and people in the community went along with that because it was temporary in nature. So you may. The restaurant across the street for me to have two Jersey barriers and a bunch of plastic things outside my residential unit because it's, it's for COVID. And, uh, you know, I know they need to survive, but if I have to look at that for the next twenty years, that may be a little more concerned.
Oh, yeah, I'm not talking about twenty. Okay, what about, what about food trucks?
Uh, there, again, there's, there's discussions about all those types of activities, Susan.
Okay.
Again, the difficulty is, is a lot of people have hard fixed assets. If I'm a restaurateur and I'm paying taxes.
Right.
Limited space, I may be upset if a food truck parks right outside of my restaurant. Vending license and, and pays their taxes in another community.
Maybe that can't.
Balancing act there.
But, and I see, um, I see Mark Levitt has left us, but Mark Levitt is very interested in another thing, which is setting up the, the, um. Uh, what do you call the Saturday, the farmer's market?
Yeah.
In the Saugatucket Park. He thinks the Saugatucket Park would be a great place to put the, uh, the farmer's market.
Absolutely.
And, um, so I don't know, I don't know what that would entail, but, um, but things like that where you could draw. You know, that would just be Saturday mornings, but you could draw people downtown and I think that would, I, I think that would be good.
Does anybody know why that park isn't at the Saugatucket, the Veterans Park now? Why is it at the, you, the URI East Farm? What, why isn't it in downtown?
It could also be, it could also be in Larry's parking lot at the mall, but that wouldn't be quite as appealing, I don't think, as being on the grass. But, but a lot of urban farmers markets are on, um, in parking lots. So, so just, I mean, I just thought. I, I just think we should be working as hard as we can to try and figure out how we can get people.
Well, I can, I can say this, Susan, it sounds like the town is very actively working on this.
Okay, that's good.
And let's just, uh, wait, we'll keep it on the agenda and we'll talk about it next month as well.
Okay, fine.
Larry, I just, I just want to add one more thing about COVID. Uh, i- if you haven't gotten the shot and you're eligible, get it. I went to the Duncan Donald Center on Tuesday. Said hi to the new governor coming in because he was getting his shot through. Um, and I timed it. I arrived at twelve oh two. I was out at twelve nineteen and then included the fifteen minute wait time. So he goes absolutely. They bag him right out.
Yep.
You know?
I got mine at South County Hospital on Friday afternoon at three o'clock. I was in and out. Uh, I had to sit in a chair for fifteen minutes, uh, in the respite, uh, area.
Yep.
And, and it was a piece of cake, so I agree.
I got it. Mine at CBS, CBS Newport and I got it exactly at the moment that I was, I had scheduled it and I sat for fifteen minutes and I was.
Out you went.
Yeah.
Let's go on to the, the next agenda item because, uh, we've got nine minutes.
Okay.
And, and I, I want to give it, this is due. Uh, this is something that is new and, and Brian, it's going to be every, every, uh. At every meeting now. Uh. How many times in this committee have, have we asked about, we didn't know about Katchai going in? We didn't know that that was proposed up on, on Route One and, and all that kind of stuff. It went in. And the EDC never knew about the project. So. The planning department has this nifty thing now. And, and what you're looking at in the agenda is all the commercial. Uh, projects that are in planning. And so now. We don't have anything to complain about.
Yeah.
Every month you'll get a little update. I think it's great.
It's great. I saw it. I was very excited.
All right, and that, and that is, uh, uh, Mr. Wagner, because I, I, I complained to him that. We never discussed Dollar General at this committee at all.
No.
And I had people come up and say, what, what about da, 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 da? Didn't know. And Brian is new to our committee and didn't know that we never heard anything about this stuff. So he offered to do that and, and he, that's why he sent out a new agenda to add that. I want to compliment him.
Yeah, that was great.
Well done.
Any questions on that? Go for it.
I have to apologize because I, I didn't understand when, when I came into working with this group and I saw. This issue on the agenda, I. Assumed that this was just a time for the members to discuss this. I didn't realize that it had previously been used for pushing out information, so. I'm trying to correct that situation, um. And, and at least make all of that information available. So what I'll do is I'll create and update this table. Simply advising you where these projects are in the development stages. Um, and I'll link you to the, uh, the development page that we already have. And you can go in there and pull up whatever details, um, might interest you on the individual projects themselves.
Are we still getting?
Brian, where's the Dollar's General store supposed to be at? Where's Kingstown sixty, eighteen sixty?
Right next to the police station.
Yeah.
Uh. Just sa- on the same side of the road as the John Deere dealership.
Yeah.
Car dealership, the vacant between there and the, uh, elite housing.
Okay.
Are we still getting, or are we still going to get, um, um, referrals from the planning department? Uh, for developers to come in and brief us on what they're doing and, and get our. Uh, recommendation to go forward or is that, is that out of the, uh? Out of the picture now? That was one of our responsibilities.
O- only if the, uh, the person.
Right.
Requesting whatever they're requesting from the town. Ask, ask it, ask for it, but we'll know about them now. So if we have any questions, we can ask the planning.
Previously, my understanding was what happened was they were told when they came in to do the development, they were told that if they would like to get a recommendation from the EDC. Uh, they could, they could do that. It wasn't necessary, but they could do it. They could brief the EDC and get a letter of support or whatever. But that might, yeah, just asking the question, you know, we used to do that. We haven't been doing it for quite a while. Maybe we don't need to.
Jamie, that, 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 he is correct. That's what used to happen. Uh, but I will tell you that. When we endorsed a project that the planning board didn't like, uh, from then on, the planning department never passed anything else on to us. Okay, that's the reality of it.
Jay, we're, we're in contact. Our, our goal is to be communicating with all applicants early on. And if an applicant, uh, asks the question and wants to come before you, we would encourage that. It, it's not necessarily something that we will mandate through our department. Uh, we're trying to establish some certainty. For the developers and that if they meet the regulations, they get their permits in a timely manner, um. I want to use the term devoid of public opposition. Um, again, regulatory standpoint, if an applicant meets the regulations, they should get their permits in a timely manner. And there shouldn't be, um. Kind of any hindrance or roadblocks thrown. Before then, because there's public opposition to it.
It was never a roadblock.
Or review.
Uh, Jamie, it was never a roadblock. It was always something was offered as an option. To them if they wanted additional support. And I, I think that that was a good thing. Uh, back, uh, when we were doing it.
Both hotels did it.
Yeah, we weren't, we weren't a roadblock.
I was facility. No, I'm not, um, I, I don't think EDC, I didn't intend to say that you were a roadblocker, but we're trying to give certainty to applicants that when they meet the regulations, the process is smooth. And by saying that, I'm like. An endorsement from EDC is welcome, but you shouldn't need it.
Right.
Right? You should not need it. You, if, if.
That's perfect.
Hotels and you meet the standards associated with hotels, you should get your permit in a timely manner.
This does put a lot of, um, uh, focus on the quality of those regulations.
We, that, that, that is a, a strong objective of mine to, to bring the. Quality development that you are deserving of as a community. Uh, of your status and from my perspective, as time goes on, we need the regulations to support that vision. So we, again, I, uh, just to. On that subject matter, um, had budget review with council last night. There were a few questions, but we put a little bit of consulting money in the planning department's budget. And the following you in, in the capital improvement program. Uh, I think I have a three or four-year ask of close to a quarter of a million dollars to upgrade regulations, develop design standards. And kind of bring you forward, uh, from where you are. Asking the developer to do something nice versus the regulatory requirement that it's an essence mandated that you do something nice. With a known outcome, not, you know, so they have some guidance through the application process.
This, this one change. Has been sorely needed for years.
Yeah.
And I, I, I just, I just, I, I'm thrilled with that.
Larry, for three years, did a, a much larger in-depth chart for the town council in the town of Simsbury. Um, and again, it hadn't been done for them and it's something I initiated there. Uh, we talked about it in the department and Brian took it on to give to you. Um, again, what we can't promise is once they're out of our department. Uh, trying to get the building department to take over that aspect to say it's under construction. You know? And where they are in the building phase, but I think it's something that's transportable to the zoning and building department also.
Speaking of regulations, I have a question. Is it, um, legal? I meant to look in Muni code to see. Can you park a car that doesn't have a license plate in a public lot? Overnight or anytime?
It, it, I think you would be hard pressed if it's just there for twenty-four hours to, um. Make an issue of that, Susan, but if someone is. Storing a vehicle in a public lot without registration or plates, um, you know, let warning know about it or let the, uh, Joel know. Let the police know about it.
Okay.
It's nine o'clock.
Oop.
I love it.
I've got a question.
That's courtesy of Jay Newsom, by the way. That's my computer. It tells me every hour.
Susan had to ask that last question.
Is that, is that to wake you up so you know when to shut off the computer?
That's right.
Yeah. I, I want to use this for, for two seconds to, to also. Update on stuff that's happening in town. That we know about. So I can, I can tell you that, uh, Planet Fitness. Is still going into the mall. Construction's supposed to start again in July and be completed to open, uh, around Labor Day. And that's because that's when they expect. That they can have full use of the whole facility. So the whole COVID thing has delayed that, but that's an update on that. Uh, there was, uh, a request, uh, from the committee, uh, and I know, I know, uh, Rob was upset about. Uh, Paul Massey using, uh, the Union Fire District's property, the former Houston Brothers. On High Street for storage of vehicles. And I was told by, uh, some powers to be at, at Massey. That that has been shelved.
Right.
And they're not going to.
But it's on the, wait a minute, isn't it on?
It's, it's on there.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm telling you that I talked to someone. In that organization and they're looking for an alternative site.
Excellent.
Great.
Right, that doesn't mean there is an alternative site.
Well, no, but maybe then it means that he's willing to talk to you again, Larry, about moving the whole frigging enterprise.
Uh, and I, and I, I, I talked to him about that.
I know you did.
And, 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 uh, I haven't heard back if there is.
But he, didn't he tell you that he had made this ten-year plan to store cars? It's his car.
It was a ten-year lease, yeah, yeah, so that's.
That's on hold. So maybe now I'd like to hear from you again.
I, I know of another property in town that he's looking to do the same thing on. That zone for it and everything else.
But, but he told you that it was done deal. Maybe if he can get there before it's a done deal. And, and it is his cars that I was asking about because he has many cars that are parked in, um, in that. Town parking lot. Many of them do not have license plates on them. They're all Chevys. So he is using the town's parking lot. I counted sixteen spaces he was using. In the town's parking lot, including some that aren't spaces right along the, the walkway there. For the cars that he is either, doesn't have space for, or they're lined up for service or something or other. I don't know.
I, 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 I don't know about that, but I know that there. I, I could give you that update because it was listed here and I saw, I can, I can shed a little light on that.
Yeah.
And, and the, uh, Brute Awakenings deal, i- it is done. And that, that's being marketed again, that piece of property.
Oh, oh, it's done. It's done.
It's over. Brute Awakenings is not going there.
No.
All right.
Oh, that's too bad.
We need something in there. It looks horrible.
Did they declare bankruptcy or are they going out of business?
No, it's just that it's not financially feasible at this time.
Cause CAF Bar is moving into the Old Town Meats.
Yeah, four oh one studios. I'll go your way. Yes, they're in the process of doing that, which opens up, uh, the area next to Monroe Realty. Uh, where the CAF Bar used to be. And, and, uh, uh. Green Line is going to move from their current place down the street to the new place. And that will free up the first floor of where Green Line is for someone to rent as well.
What goes on on the second floor?
Uh, they still are going to be using that for offices and that kind of stuff.
Oh, okay.
All right, Green Line owns that building.
Okay.
And, and they're gonna. They're looking at tenants now. All right, nothing.
Give everybody an update about URI's commencement if you want. Give everybody an update about URI's commencement if you want, um, the class of 2020. Uh, we didn't get to celebrate, of course. What we're looking to do is maybe do something in person in the fall. Possibly around alumni and family weekend. If, you know, depending on the whole COVID and variants and everything. But the class of 2021, we're going to do a hybrid. We're going to do the main ceremony virtually. So the honorary degree recipients and all the, the degrees conferred will be the formal ceremony held virtually with the president, the provost. And then the actual colleges will be in person at Mead Field. And there, we're thinking of doing 250 at a time laid out, spread out at Mead Field. Ball Field, 250 students, graduates, no family, no friends. Uh, it would all be live streamed so that, um, any family and friends would have to see it all, you know, virtually. But the, the students, after doing many surveys with them, they absolutely want to walk across the stage. That in their college, they can go up, have their name written there, a picture up on a screen, walk across the stage, leave the field. Then the next 250 come in for the Arts and Sciences College. They get graduated, they go up on the screen. So, you know, Arts and Sciences being, you know, a thousand plus. Uh, we're going to do a survey and find out how many really would like to do that at this point. So we might have to do five or six College of Arts and Science ceremonies, you know, dog and pony show. Then do human, uh, health services, several of those. So we're going to start May, the Friday, actually the Thursday night to do the excellence awards, go into starting Friday. Run all the way through the weekend, you know, every hour, hour and a half, just in and out, in and out, in and out. So that's our plan. That'll be in person. So we feel like we're compromising by doing an in-person for the colleges.
Thank you for that update. All right, uh, I want to go to an update from the planning department. Anything we haven't hit?
I don't, I think we've covered most of.
Yeah.
What we would have brought up under this agenda heading.
I, I'm just glad, I'm looking, the next item on the agenda is, oh, we, we haven't done minutes. But, uh, do you want to approve the minutes? You want to, you want to make a motion on the minutes?
Can we skip to next month?
The next month.
Can we save them till next month? I haven't even read them.
I didn't either.
The, the one thing I thought I, I, I caught Brian was that, uh, our newest member was present. And I don't think he was on the list of.
I will double check that.
All right, just look for Mark Levitt, uh, on there. And that he was introduced to the committee and, and that kind of stuff.
I've got a quick question.
Yep.
What's that property on Main Street? It's just west of Main Street. When you go up the hill, it looks like almost one of the Newport Mansions.
Oh, the McKimmeade White House?
Yeah, it's large with the big.
And it's for sale again.
So it's a, a residential property?
Yeah, it's a residential property. It was built by.
Wow.
By McKimmeade and White in the 18 something. Um, and it's quite impressive inside. It has a great big oak panelled. You remember, Larry, we went to see it.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's huge.
It was a commercial, you know, they used it for, you know, events.
It could, it certainly could be used for that, but it needs a lot of work.
Yeah, well, no, I think they put a lot of work into it.
Okay.
Yeah, and now it's for sale again for some millions of dollars. I can't remember.
But it's zoned residential, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so I'm very happy to have that list. We didn't really, I think maybe we ought to move the list of. Projects so it doesn't get caught at the end of our meetings in the future.
Uh.
Or, I don't know.
I think that's where it belongs because.
Right.
Uh, you don't want to push the Saugatucket right along.
No, that's right. Okay, right.
It's more, it's, it's a little easier to talk about.
Uh, I, I did talk to Roland Fiore the other day.
Wow.
And, and gave him an update of the Saugatucket. He was who I was talking about with Rex Evelyn.
I knew it.
He, he, he is very excited, uh, about the project. And is still at very, wants to be active, uh, on it. Uh, he has, he, he played, he grew up on that basketball court. And he has very fond memories of what it was. And, and I think, bless you, I, I think that that, uh, is only a positive. And, and he is getting more active in the Johnny Cake Center. And, and low income housing, uh, associated with it. They just bought property from the Welcome House and, and that kind of stuff. So you'll, you will see his name coming up more on a volunteer basis, uh, helping that end.
I know his, I know his sister Lisa is, uh, she was at a, I went to a women's fundraiser for the Johnny Cake shop. They wanted $5,000 for each of us and she was there.
That's great.
Yep, so that's my update on that. Uh, anything else? I, I'm, I'm very happy that we're not going to be looking at a final design. Uh, of the Saugatucket on April Fool's Day. I'd much rather just talk about an update and, uh, we'll go.
You weren't, I don't think it would have been April Fools that would have been.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Uh, anything further? Do I hear a motion to adjourn and I'll see you all on April Fool's Day?
Motion to adjourn.
Nine 11, we missed it by 11.
Well, but we had a, we had, we had a lot of visitors.
Yeah.
All right, we, we need a second. I made the motion.
I second.
I second.
Okay, let's say hi. All right, Jamie, thank you very much. I know you don't have to be here. I appreciate that you've been.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Everybody.
Brian, great work on the agenda.
It's important to me. Thank you.
Really great. Thank you. Have a good night.
Sure. Be safe.